And joining the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the August 19th meeting of the common council to order, please. Call the roll.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Fantasy.
Here.
Counselor Bender.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor McDonald.
Here.
Counselor Mazolia.
Here.
Counselor Finsland.
Here.
Counselor Herrick.
Here.
Counselor Dahlbeck.
Here.
And Counselor Kadat.
Recognizing a full quorum, we'll ask for consideration of the minutes of the August 5th meeting.
So moved.
For a motion in multiple seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I'd like the councils to consider moving Resolutions 10.1 to this portion of the meeting.
Seven.
For a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. I have a motion. Prior to that motion, I'll ask Director, where did he go? Circ, Mr. Circ.
Let me read it.
There you go.
I'll read it first. I'm going to read it first, okay? Okay, item 10.1 is a resolution approving the project plan, project area plan for the city of Superior Harbor Waterfront Hotel Project.
Jason.
In front of you tonight, you have one of the first steps in stepping forward with the hotel development in the area that you see. This is the project area, which is essentially the item on the agenda tonight along with the project area plan. About two months ago, we were approached by, and I'm going to have Ken Goldfine, CEO of ZMC, come in and talk a few minutes before or after my presentation here, but we, ZMC approached us to construct a hotel on the property, and I'll come back to the slide, essentially in this area you see in blue. We've been moving through the, as you know and probably have seen through committee, the Plan Commission, as well as the Redevelopment Authority, the project plan, as well as the TIF plan. The TIF plan will be looking at the next, at the next meeting, and then finally a development agreement with, with ZMC will be looking at in the second meeting in September. But this is the conceptual, and not a very good conceptual, but I wanted to give you an idea of what some of the projects we've been looking at, and what we've talked about with counselors and Plan Commissioners, and looking at providing some additional parking, moving the playground, as well as the hotel. Now, this does not capture what we are looking at doing with the parking for not only the hotel, but also the Bong Center. We are in process of doing that, and will hopefully have something to trot out soon for the council to look at, as well as the Bong Center, and we're also working a little bit with Perkins to kind of design some of their area to make that a little more functional as well. To give you a little history on the, on the project plan, the Redevelopment Authority had held a public hearing on the 30th of July approving the project plan with some amendments that were passed down from the Plan Commission. I'm going to go back to here. The project plan actually encompassed, and I can probably move my cursor, yes, encompassed some residential areas over here. Residents actually requested the Plan Commission to pass down to the Redevelopment Authority that they would have liked to be removed from the project area plan due to the blighted connotation. The Redevelopment Authority acquiesced, and thus we have a new project area for a project area boundary, so we will be approving that tonight. The TIF, and you'll see that next time, I won't talk too much about that, actually will include the residential area due to the statutory requirements that we have for the type of tax increment district that we are creating here. So essentially, you are, like I mentioned, you did in June approve the blight finding for the area, and the blight finding very quickly for this is, and according to statute, encompasses a lot of things, but mainly for this, the purpose of our project here includes the vacant land, amount of public land that's there, as well as the abnormal plating, which we are going through corrections now on through some CSM development. So there's a lot of moving parts with this project, and I guess what I would, what I'd like to do now with no objections, and in case there's any questions about what we're doing on the project plan, I'd like to introduce Ken Goldfine, and then we can, I think we probably have some folks here to, here to speak as well, so. Ken?
I'll move this back. Mr. Mayor, Counselors, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. ZMC Hotels is delighted to be able to move forward with this project, this AD Room Hampton Inn and Suites, we think is going to be a significant benefit to the city of Superior, the businesses of Superior, and the residents of Superior, to have a first-class, brand-new hotel in this outstanding location. We found out about this project when we heard that there had been another group, I believe out of Utah, that had been working on a similar project that had stalled out, and we came in and made a presentation to various members of the city administration, and essentially, I don't want to say took over, but we were presented with the same terms and conditions as the first group from Utah. Since that time, we've moved forward with design, worked closely with the city to take care of significant site challenges, and we've procured bank financing, and we've procured the Hampton Inn and Suites franchise, so we're ready to move ahead with this project. We have a long history of doing business in the city of Superior. We've owned the Bridgeview Motel, I believe, since the late 1960s, and we have business interests in Duluth, so we're very familiar with the hotel business here in the Twin Ports. We think this hotel will be a, will spur additional development along the Highway 53 corridor, the main highway from International Falls all the way down to Chicago, and the main highway through the city of Superior, which I believe is something that would, everybody would like to see develop further as a commercial corridor. We also think that the hotel in this location is going to be a benefit to both the Bong Museum and the existing Perkins Restaurant. We think we've come up with some imaginative ways to alleviate the parking challenges, and we think that they're going to add more visitors to the Bong Center, and obviously more business to Perkins. So we're delighted to be here. We are excited to move forward. We think we have all of the pieces in place, and we hope that we can continue to work with the city, which has been very cooperative and a pleasure to deal with thus far, and I'm here to answer any questions that might come up.
Are there any questions, Mr. Goldfine?
Looking at, I don't know, when you would get started, is any idea when this would be, the project would be finished and open for business?
Well, the most optimistic scenario is that we would, this particular building overlooking the harbor and with the slope, we're going to most likely have to put it on pilings, which is an additional step instead of a traditional foundation. The most optimistic scenario is that we would get those into the ground this fall and be able to come out of the ground, or late this fall, depending on, depending on if winter comes before Halloween or after Halloween.
That's only two weeks from now.
Exactly, yes. So optimistically, we could have it open for Grandma's marathon, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't stake my reputation on it. That's, that's a goal. Hopefully, next summer shortly after would be realistic, but it is possible we could have it open for the first couple of weeks of June if the weather cooperates and everything lines up. Thank you.
Counselor Olson. Mr. Goldfine, you got another hotel going up right now?
Yes, we do. Up in Hiving, Minnesota.
Okay. How's that project coming along?
It's, it's moving forward very quickly. We, that was a redevelopment site, there was a grocery store on that site that ended up getting torn down, so we started several months ago. There's three stories of concrete block and plank up, and they're working on the plumbing and that sort of stuff. Our goal there is to get open by December. We started with the teardown of the grocery store last fall, and we got into construction as soon as it thought out around April. It's a very similar-sized building, about 80 rooms. That gives us more confidence with this project because we, working with the contractor, working with the budgets, we know what it's going to cost, and, and we're learning, we've built about 11 hotels, several of them similar to this, so we're somewhat familiar with, with what these buildings take. And the Hiving project's coming along, coming along on time, and we're pretty happy with that.
Did you run into any similar problems compared, you know, the talk of the parking, it's all, that's on a flat site, I'm assuming, but?
The site itself is a little bit of a slope, but we're able to put in a traditional foundation. The parking was not an issue because the site was a grocery store, which, as you can imagine, had a lot of parking, so, so, no, it's, in terms of those issues, we didn't have any of that, and the city of Hiving was very cooperative in helping us get through some of the plating and lot issues and some of that access stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Counselor Sweeney.
Can you talk a little bit about the Hampton Inn franchise, where they are in the marketplace and?
Sure. It's a great question, thank you. Now I can sell. So in the world of hotels, there's basically three strata. There's the luxury or high-end, the mid-market, and the economy. So Ritz-Carlton, Holiday Inn, or Sheraton, Hampton Inn, Courtyard, and then the motel sixes and that sort of stuff. Hampton Inn is at the very top end of something called the mid-market without food and beverage. So as you go up through the mid-market, there's mid-market with food and beverage, which would be similar to a Holiday Inn-type hotel, that sort of a thing. The main competitors for a Hampton Inn and Suites would be a Holiday Inn Express and Suites, Marriott Courtyard, Hilton Garden Inn, that, those sorts of hotels. This hotel is going to, with the word suites, it's going to be a, really a beautiful building. You'll walk into a two-story lobby with a very contemporary look. It serves a continental breakfast with, it's a hot continental breakfast. All the rooms will have what is more or less considered standard in this part of the market, free high-speed internet, there'll be a small meeting room, there'll be guest laundry facilities, there'll be, I'm drawing a blank here, flat panel TVs, and it'll be, it'll be quite nice. There'll be a free exercise room. This particular hotel, we're contemplating having at least some rooms on the harbor side have balconies because we'll have such a beautiful view of the harbor, and it'll be, it'll, it'll compete, it'll be, it'll be as nice as our Inn on Lake Superior over in Duluth, and that's about the nicest hotel in our company. And if you've ever been in that, I think that would be the most similar thing. There is a Hampton Inn next door, it'll look completely different. Mr. Lundberg owns that, and it's a very good Hampton Inn. You can get a feel for that if you'd like to see what a Hampton Inn is. This Hampton Inn and Suites is a slightly more deluxe version of that, and is closer to our Inn on Lake Superior. You bet.
President Finsland.
Because of your proximity to the Osage Trail, are you contemplating any kind of access to that trail or secure parking for winter activities like snowmobile sleds and things like that?
Well, I, I can't speak to the secure parking issue because I frankly just haven't been involved in the details of those meetings, but I would assume that we will have something like that because our customers, our guests, will want that. As far as the trail goes, we think that's going to be a wonderful marketing opportunity and sales opportunity for us. At our Edgewater Hotel and at our Inn on Lake Superior, as well as in other hotels we have in other states, one of the amenities that we feature is free bicycles. So we have a stack of bicycles, and you can sign them out at the front desk, and we'll probably have a map of the trail system and things like that, so it's going to be something that we're going to encourage our guests to use. And it is a beautiful trail system, by the way, I like it.
Any other questions of Mr. Goldfine? What I'll do is, prior to the public comment, I'll ask for a motion in second. Counselor. I've got a moment to discuss, I've got a question for Jason, if I could. Sure. Just real simple, when we talked about the residents asking to be removed from the TIF district, how many residents, how many homes were, are we talking about?
I do believe there are roughly 13 or 14 homes in that area. Yes.
All right, thank you. Do we understand the motion? Okay. I'll ask for their members of the public that wish to speak to this issue.
I'll call up the people that have signed up, but prior to doing that, I just want to read into the record that we did get a communication signed by 13 residents opposing the proposed Hampton Inn development that you received at your desk tonight. Kent Oliver.
And as Mr. Oliver makes his way to the podium, I would just remind the group that we cap comments by the public to three minutes by ordinance. I'll keep track of the time, and so as not to step on your thoughts or words, Mr. Oliver and others, I'll simply light up my light at the three-minute mark and hope that you notice. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Counselors, thank you for the opportunity of speaking. The Goldfines are a great company, ZMC, no question about that. We have a number of Hampton Inns, we have an Embassy Suites, we have some other products as well. We have three properties in town, of which Barker's Island and the Holiday Inn Express will be direct competitors with this hotel. I think from our perspective, you know, we're not, we're not afraid of competition, we're afraid of unfair competition. I came into this town, bought the properties, employed the people, developed the Express Inn and Suites, and didn't get anything from the city, didn't request anything. We have a property across the street that is old, antiquated in today's terms, in terms of what customers expect, and our posture and the proposal that we had submitted to you was to remove that property and put a comparable product into the community. So I'd like you to ponder that. You're not pounding 10 pounds into a five-pound bag, don't have to worry about parking, removal of residents' views, et cetera. And I wish that I had had the opportunity to bid on this public property, in my perspective, and I've done that in other communities. There's typically been an RFP, a bidding process, and that's why I developed the Embassy Suites in Brooklyn Center. When the Utah people were brought in, I talked to your economic development head, Michelle, and said, "We'd be happy to entertain and build a Hampton Inn in your community." We had also applied for the franchise, but were a day late, and so the franchise was not given to us. Typically, in order to get that franchise, you have to have land control, and currently ZMC does not have total land control. So apparently, they've, Hampton and Hilton has changed their process. So that's all I have to say. I wish I could have had an equal opportunity, and, you know, it's in your hands right now, so thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Chandler.
I have to agree with Mr. Goldfine about the gorgeous view that the people who visit the Hampton Inn will be getting when they stay there, because that has been the view that I and my family have had at 202 East Second Street for 40-some years, and now we're going to get to stare at the Hampton Inn for the rest of our natural lives. That's a shame, and that's what the hundreds of thousands of travelers who go on East Second are going to get to see. They aren't going to get to see Lake Superior anymore, they aren't going to get to see the bay, they're going to get to see the Hampton Inn. That's a shame. You have taken public property, you have given it to a private entity, you have proven once again that this land belongs to the wealthy, it does not belong to you and I. The views don't belong to you and I. We don't even own our own property anymore. It's a shame, and I for one would like to see these creative parking solutions, because as I watched the parking that went on this weekend, when there was an activity at the Bong Center and the goings-on at Barker's Island, it was a fiasco, people, and at a hotel in there. The people at Perkins right now are wondering what's going on. They were not in favor of this. We were lied to, we were told they were. How many more lies have been told? There were few questions asked here tonight. I hope you've all asked more questions in the privacy that we weren't entitled to.
Charles Glazeman.
Mayor, city councilors, my name is Charles Glazeman. I'm here today as a Douglas County Supervisor of District 7, and also as a member of the Superior Public Museums Board. I am supporting this project. I believe that we're losing business during the week and even on some of the weekends to those hotels in Canal Park, and possibly even as far as Herman Town, and I think that's a shame. We have a lot of great assets here in Superior, we need to promote them, and we need to get more people here visiting us. We have an opportunity to increase the revenue from the hotel motel tax, and this is important to organizations like the Superior Public Museums Board. We get a portion of that to use to maintain your assets, the Meteor, the Fairlon Museum, and the Police and Fire Commission. This is another way of us being able to, to maintain those assets without coming to the city or the county and asking for help, and actually getting help from, from the outside. Finally, I'd like to say that ZMC Hotels is a reliable and, and very competent hoteler. They have been doing this for a long, long time, they've got a terrific track record, and based on those reasons, I would encourage your support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Minor.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Dave Minor, I'm the President and CEO for the Chamber for Superior in Douglas County. This time, the Chamber would urge you to continue forward with this project. As any project, you're going to have people on both sides of, you know, whether it is right or wrong. I can tell you certain facts. Operating the visitor center when our building was out there for 15 years, now operating the visitor center in the Bong Center, listening to the businesses in our community, we know that we are losing people across the bridge looking for this type of amenity, this type of a hotel. Those are questions that we get asked all the time, when they're, when, when people are looking for this specific type, this level of a hotel, this level of service that they're looking for, this is why this project is needed. Again, through the work that the Development Association has done and the surveys that we have done to our members, we know a lot of our business is going across the bridge when they want this type of situation. Either they're choosing it themselves by the traveler coming in, or the company themselves wants to find a little bit nicer place for them to be able to, to locate while they're in our community. Every project is going to have a moment where it isn't perfect for everybody, but I think in the end, when you look at the project that they're building, you look at the reputation that ZMC comes into this community, as they said, they've been here since 1960, they, they have great operations all throughout the country itself, and I think at this point, it is, it's, it's upon you to really keep this project moving because this is something our community needs. Again, when you look at, Mr. Glazeman brought up the fact that the Superior Public Museum, part of their funding comes from rooms tax. You have many organizations in this community that receive rooms tax to be able to help their operation, to help invest in this community. This is going to add to that total number at the end of the year to what we can reinvest in the tourism industry. Tourism industry in the state of Wisconsin and in Douglas County is in the top three industries for what produces jobs and opportunities for people in our area. So at this time, the Chamber would highly encourage you to keep this project going so they can get into the ground, so we can see this asset being used next summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Kanata. My name's Rick Kanata, I'm a mayor of Hiving, Minnesota. Mayor, Counselors, I just want to talk a little bit about ZMC and the relationship we had. We're sort of in the same situation when I started out as mayor of Hiving. We needed to bring a hotel into town, we started with another developer, things just didn't work out, ZMC came into town. We have a good relation, working relationship with them, they stand by what they say. Like Mr. Goldfine said, they did, we had an old grocery store, they tore it down last December, they got in the ground in April, and at this point, they're all the way, all the blocks up on the interior walls, and the precast is set on the, on the roof right now, and they're, they're actually on schedule to have the, open in December sometime. And I have to agree with the two other gentlemen, we have the same problem, we didn't have enough hotels in town, we were losing people to other cities for, just from minor hockey tournaments to everything else, and it's a great investment for the city of Hiving to be working with ZMC, and I just want to let you know that, that it's been a good working relationship with them, so, and they're, they're ready to go, I think, and that's when they came into town for Hiving, they were ready to go, they took over the other plans that were there, and it's in the ground, and it's going to be built this year, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We don't have anyone outside.
We have no other members that have signed up of the, from the audience. Any further discussion by the council? Counselor Olson? Does anybody, or is anybody capable of answering the lady's question about the parking?
We know that we're going to have some issues probably a few times a year. Right now, Counselor Olson, we are in the process of, of really looking very closely at, at the whole area, as well as what I pointed out on the, on the slide before. We are looking at, I think, a scenario right now of, on the site of about 116 spaces that we've been able to squeeze out. Currently, right now, just because of configuration, I think there's about 78 there. So we'll be adding some, be adding some spaces as well. Again, we're going to have some times probably when it's going to be crowded, when there's a World War II event, or, or when Barker's a World War II event, or when Barker's, you know, the Dragon Boat. Those are some great events, and they bring people. Dragon Boat, I think, has kind of figured it out, where we're shuttling some folks and whatever, but we're still going to have that. I will, you know, take this opportunity that we did talk with Sean Flaherty, both Todd and I did, from Perkins, and he is working with us on the parking, as well as he has also spoken in favor of the project. So I don't know where Mrs. Chandler is getting that information, so.
Thank you.
Councilor?
Say, Jason, I just wanted to add that you are right about Rotary figuring it out, and also the snowmobiles across the water, which I can't remember the name of, the exact name of the event, but they also, Sunrise Rotary sets up the parking for them, as they do for the Dragon Boat Festival, which, of course, is this weekend, the 22nd and 23rd, at Barker's Island. It's a fun-filled, free family event. That wasn't a commercial.
Good plug.
But both groups have figured it out, and that is that park at the Mariner Mall and be transported by bus.
Any other discussion? You have a motion on the floor in a second. Do you want to read the motion or read the resolution again?
Okay, the motion is made by Councilor Dennis Dahlbeck, seconded by Councilor Esther Dahlbeck, to approve the resolution approving the project area plan for the city of Superior Harbor Waterfront Hotel Project.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll return to the regular portion of the agenda.
Item number six is the Consent Agenda. Councilor Bender has requested to pull item 6.5 for discussion.
Heard the motion in second to approve the balance of the Consent Agenda with 6.5 being pulled. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Councilor Bender?
Let me read it.
I'm sorry.
Item 6.5 is the License and Fees Committee of the August 11, 2014 meeting recommending approval of the original Class B liquor and beer license application by Super One Liquor LLC, 2202 East Second Street, for the license period September 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. And you have received a communication from Bruce Anderson, General Counsel for Miners, Inc.
Councilor?
Well, first of all, I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
And then I would also say that this was at the behest of Jim Boland from the President's to pull this. And I believe there are a number of people who have signed up to speak to this issue.
So motion in second to approve?
Yes.
Am I correct on that?
Yes, that is correct. And Siri's not available. Yes, that is correct. I may have motion to approve.
Discussion?
There are a number of people signed up.
Right, I was asking the council first. Discussion from the council first? If not, have those that have signed to speak.
Walt Hoggan?
And as Mr. Hoggan makes his way to the podium, I just remind folks to try to stay true of the three-minute limit. I will hit the light when you're there, and hopefully that won't interrupt you as bad as if I said something.
My name is Walter Hoggan, and I'm the owner of Pudges at 2223 East Fifth Street. At all the meetings that my wife and I attended and other business members of East End, it was stated that there wouldn't be any bar or liquor store at the Super One development. And for this reason, when Super One had a person come to me and wanted to trade some property that we owned, and they wanted this property moved by their loading dock, now it was their loading dock. I went along with this because I was given the impression and told that there wasn't, you know, there wasn't going to be any bar or liquor store there. And it was stated at all the meetings, and what I don't understand is that, you know, it was stated at the License and Fees Committee that it was too bad that this wasn't in writing. Well, I think a gentleman's agreement, when everybody was at these meetings, that heard this, that this wasn't going to be coming about, and now they've changed their mind. And then I just can't see how the council would approve this, being that this agreement was made. And to me, a gentleman's agreement is just as good as a written agreement. And then it was also stated by Mr. Markovich that it's a slippery slope when you deny a business to move in, but it's also a slippery slope when you make verbal agreements with people and you don't keep them. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, folks from the public and speakers. I'm going to build a little bit on what Walter said, because I'm here representing some folks that are of the same mind as Walter. Part of what I think has been brought up in the past and was brought up at committee meetings is that somehow there is an attempt here to prevent competition by competitors. That's not true. There are competitors here tonight that no one that you see that's here on our behalf is going to object to Quick Trips Beer License, none of that. What we're here to complain about is, in part, the integrity of the process and what it means to competition. Fair competition. Large box retailers, which make no mistake, Miners is a very large player, Super One, other communities recognize a need to prevent and to protect smaller businesses. Superior did, has for many years, by way of having the requirement of the lounge in addition to the liquor store, in an effort to prevent some like Walmart and others. Well, here we have something very similar to that, but you have an entity that's willing to use its size and its willingness to mislead and to be ingenuous to people like Walter and Sarah Hoggan to increase the margin of their competition. That's what's not fair. It's one thing to have a level playing field and have everybody know what's going on from the beginning, but when you come in and you mislead people, get them on board, supportive of your project, and then later on, pull the rug out from under them, that spins the competition in a way that's entirely unfair. And the question that you're presented with is, are you going to overlook that? Is that okay? Should there be any integrity left in the process, or if you get from point A to point B, regardless of what you do, is that appropriate? We've heard various stories over the course of time. On some occasions, we hear, even within council meetings versus committee meetings versus others, at times, we hear, "We never said that. We never made any promises like that." At other times, like at the committee meeting, we hear Attorney Markovich saying, "Oh, well, you should have known about that." It was, something was said at some time or another. But what you have to decide, if those are credibility issues for you, is whether the people who are the citizens of your community and your business owners, strong supporters of events in the city of Superior, honest people, nobody can say otherwise, your mayor, I hope that most or all of you have had an opportunity to read this article. The mayor is a man of his word. So are these people. And the question is, you get to decide tonight whether it matters if there's any integrity in the process and whether that matters. That's sufficient grounds for the denial of this license. You decide whether somebody is able to benefit directly from their own misstatements, and I would suggest to you that there is still room for integrity in the process. I have more to say, but my time is done, and I will honor that commitment. Thank you for your time.
Hello, folks, councilors, mayor. My name is Steve Ladine. I'm an attorney here in town, and I represent Jim Boland and Carol Boland, owners of President's one-stop liquor store and tavern. It's been suggested, and there's been pressure applied to various councilors, that a no vote would limit the councilor's discretion in the future to grant liquor licenses. That is not the case. A number of you were present at the License and Fee Committee meeting, where the city attorney went through that process and went through a bit of the history in regards to that. The councilors have complete discretion on whether or not to issue a license. That's one of the most fundamental tenets of a free democracy, one that a court rarely, if ever, would overturn. So your decision should not be made based upon pressure or suggestion that this would invite a lawsuit that would succeed if it were to be denied. So long as the decision is not arbitrary or capricious, oppressive, or discriminatory, a lawsuit would not prevail. And again, Mr. Pearl did a good job of explaining that at the License and Fee Committee meeting. The law on the issuance of liquor license provides that a municipality may issue it, not that it shall. There's legal precedent for the denial of a liquor license to an otherwise qualified applicant, to which nobody objected to. And the council in that case based their decision on how it would affect the existing business owners in the area and the public at large. That case, as a matter of fact, was in the city of Superior, in the same East End we're talking about tonight. That's the Ron case. It was decided in 1943. It has never been overturned. It has been cited since then. It is still precedent in the state of Wisconsin, the same East End. In that case, the applicant to apply for the license met all statutory qualifications, and nobody objected to the issuance of the license, but the board nonetheless denied the application. The council refused the license because they were of the opinion that four taverns in the area were sufficient. Now, I'm going to quote from that case, that in granting licenses, they sought to give preference to men who had been in the tavern business previously, and that as there were four already in business in East End, they refused the applicant the license, rather than to give him a license and put a man out of business who had previously been in business in the East End. There was nothing against his personal character or against the particular building in which he was to operate the tavern, other than they were of the opinion that four taverns were sufficient for the East End. That decision was upheld on appeal as being within the city's sound discretion, even though by definition, it may have been discriminatory. Again, that law, that case is still good law in Wisconsin today. There are other compelling reasons to vote no. The gentleman's agreement that was discussed would be sufficient. A corporation should be held to its word, just like any other individual. By law in Wisconsin, the definition of person includes a corporation. The detrimental effect on my clients, the Bolands and other establishments, is really unquestionable. Super One does a very good job of selling groceries. They've obviously done very well, and by making good decisions. The issuance of a license for this store is not going to make or break Super One, but it would make or break other individuals. Councilor Olson referred earlier, and I guess I'll let him make his comments afterwards, but what would this create? Wouldn't necessarily create additional jobs. For every job it would create at Super One, it could easily result in loss of a job at some of these other establishments, or closing of establishments.
Senator Ladine, I'll ask you to wrap it up.
Okay.
We're about past the four-minute mark.
I don't believe it would add anything as far as reducing the price of what it would cost me to go buy a six-pack of beer, but it certainly would, you know, like a new gas station. Wouldn't decrease the price of gas for a gallon, but it would certainly take from the pie that the other establishments already are using. On behalf of my clients, I ask that you deny the application. Thank you.
Asking a lawyer to talk for three minutes or less is ridiculous. I'm not here to discuss lawsuits tonight. That discussion has no place before the city council. That discussion is for another place and another time, and I hope we never get there. Frankly, the reason that I am here is to simply ask you to apply another rule, a rule that's been in existence for thousands of years, and that's known as the Golden Rule. I think that I want you to think that you are going to treat my clients, the Super One, as you would wish to be treated if you were the applicant and you were operating this business. There's talk about some gentleman's agreement that Super One was never going to apply for a liquor license, and that simply is not true. Those of you who are at the License and Fees Committee meeting, remember that I read to you a transcript from the December 18, 2012 city council meeting. There was a colloquy between council member Olson and the architect Geisler from Super One. Council member Olson, "The retail, 9,000, 10,000 square foot retail, is that listed?" Architect Geisler, "At this time, it is undefined." As Jason had said earlier, and I think he's referring to Jason Cirque, it said earlier, "There will be some complementary businesses. Could be pharmacy, could be flower shop, could be..." And then council member Olson interrupts, "Liquor store?" Architect Geisler, "I suppose that could be possible, but at this time, there are no defined uses for that." And then they go on to discuss other members. That was at a public, open meeting, and it was clear at that time that Super One was reserving to themselves the opportunity to operate a liquor store if they saw fit. And this is their business that they're operating. For competitors to come in and say, "I've got mine, and I don't want you to get yours," is unconscionable. That isn't the way we do business in Superior, or frankly, anywhere else that I know of. All I'm asking you to do is to treat Super One people as fairly as you would want to be treated yourself if you were in that position. Thank you.
There are no others from the public that wish to speak? Any further comments by councilors? Councilor McDonald?
I will be abstaining my vote on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Herrick?
I'll be also abstaining from the vote.
Councilor Dennis Dahlbeck?
I just want to make a few comments. I think any business comes into town with a plan, and that plan can change down the road, which it has here. I think that we, as a city council, have to support these businesses and the changes. I did not see this as a, giving Super One a license was anything new. Everyone who wants to remember Big Seven, owned by Ansel's, they had a bar and an off-sale attached to their grocery store. And I don't believe that Super One is a big-box store. I think a big-box store sells clothes and everything else. You can go right in Douglas County, down at Gordon, get gas, buy bread and meat, and a bottle of scotch, and walk out. If you look down at Link Brothers, Link Brothers has the same thing. If you go east of here, Ashland has it, their stores sell groceries and liquor in the same place. So I don't think that anybody's going to lose any business. I think the people are going to continue going where they're going, where they have been going for years. I haven't seen anybody from... I haven't seen anybody from ICO or Holiday Station up here complaining about the quick stops coming in. It's just part of competition. It, it gives the citizens up here the best price because now you've got competition. So I, I have to support them. Thank you.
Counselor Finley.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make a couple of comments before this goes to vote. This council had referred this item to License and Fees Committee, and that was a referral to the committee for consideration. The committee approved this as a recommendation back to council. So I hope this council takes into consideration the committee process that, that we, as a council, use on a continuous basis. In addition, I don't know how many people know, but when the council just moments ago passed the consent agenda, we also approved two Class B liquor and beer licenses for two other establishments in Superior, without even consideration, without any discussion. So I guess I have a hard time with why we should treat this any different than what we just passed moments ago for two other establishments in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Olson.
If I could ask a question of Walt Hoggan, please. He'd come up to the microphone. First, I want to comment to Mr. Markovich, if you guys only got to talk for three minutes, you'd be broke. You know that, Toby. Just a question. You spoke earlier about the agreement for land sale, and I think everybody knows that there was, there was concessions when the inception of this project, that there was going to be some, some use for parking or whatever the case may be. Can you, can you just briefly tell me what those discussions were?
Well, Brian Faurier from Atwater Development came to my wife and I and said that, that to facilitate their store in the loading area, they would like some land that was on the other side of our, our garages, where we have a 17-unit garage units that are for our apartment, apartment building. And if we would have kept the land, we would have added on more garages, but they said that this would help their project that, and, and, and they had some land, they had a, a smaller piece of land that they would trade with us. And then the difference in the, in the square footage of land, they would make up with a cash payment. And so my wife and I both had, had talked to, to, to Brian, and, and at that time, we asked also if, if there was going to be a bar or liquor store. And we understood that, I think, wasn't it? That, that there wasn't, you know, they, they said that there wasn't going to be, and, and we were quite confident in this at, at all the meetings that, that we had attended, and, and this was asked. And so I, I never would have traded the land. I mean, I didn't, I didn't want their, their land that, that they wanted to trade me. It wasn't, it, the piece that, that I would have gotten would have been more valuable being on East Fourth Street instead of being on an alley. And so I never would have, you know, made this trade, but I thought that, I knew they were having enough trouble with trying to get one other person to, to try to sell this house, and so I just didn't want to stand in the way of, of development. And, and I'm not against competition. I'm just totally and 100% against, when, when people say something, when they, when, when they say that, you know, they tell us that, that there's no intention of having a bar and liquor store, and then, and then to do this, it's, 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 it's just, I mean, I've always been a handshake person and, and with her word, and, and I've never, I've never, and I've never had this problem before with, with somebody stating they were going to do something and then backing out in, in this, this large, you know, big of a, of a project. And so, and it isn't about competition, it's just about what's right and what's wrong. And it's wrong to mislead people.
Was there, was there any conversation about being able to use a back part of their parking lot for, for parking, overflow parking for you if needed, or?
That was never stated.
Okay.
And, and that was part of, we thought with, with the, I, I don't know that, what the discussions were with, with the city and, and maybe Jason could talk about that or Mayor Hagan about what was agreed upon with the city with, with what was going to be done with the alley and back of all the businesses and the parking that was proposed, which, which I heard about, and I, but I can't state, I mean, I wasn't privy to that, to that discussion. I was only, the only thing I know is what was, was promised to all the business owners.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Finley.
Yeah, I hear the term "big-box store," and I think everybody on the council and everybody, maybe not everybody in the audience, knows my attitude toward Walmart, my objection to the way the company operates and everything else. I pursued the ordinance with the aid of Frog Prell and other councilors to develop an ordinance that said we had to have an operating tavern in conjunction with a liquor store because of the fear that Walmart would come in and capture a large per, part of our liquor business in Superior. That's a true big-box store, not, not our grocery store. But when they came in, they wanted to capture some of the business. By having an ordinance that says you have to operate a tavern keeps pretty much a company like Walmart from doing that. All of a sudden, Super One is willing to come in and play by those rules, and if we don't allow this, we're going to say, okay, we don't care about our rules, and then Walmart's going to come and say, well, you don't play by your rules, then we don't need to, we'll argue that, and I'll be willing to bet that we'll be in a lawsuit with them if we don't agree to let people play by our rules. So I think we should support this business in order to prevent other big-box stores from coming in and doing just the opposite, taking over without operating a six-bar-stool tavern in their, on their premises.
Thank you, Mayor. I was an alternate on the License and Fees Committee, and I am also a representative of that area. And as stated at that meeting, I surveyed all the business, most all businesses, not the, not all of them, and overwhelmingly, they were in favor of this. Either my question was, will it affect your business? And they all said no, or it will enhance it. I was especially impressed by the other three owners of the taverns. They were extremely confident that their customer base, the way they treated them, the way they took care of them, they would not lose customers. They, I was, when I walked away from each, every one of them, I was very impressed with it. They were absolutely confident they would not lose any customers. And for that reason, plus, I don't think it's the, even though the 1940, whatever law that was, it's, it's not my position to control who goes into business and who doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dennis Dahlbeck.
Yeah, I just have one other question of our city clerk. Terry, you've handled for years licenses in and out. In your professional opinion, is there any reason why this license should not be granted?
Um, there's no reason to deny it based, I'm sorry. Not on, there's no reason to deny it based on state or local ordinances. As with any license, if they meet the requirements, I bring them forward to you with a recommendation for approval. But as been, as been stated here, it is up to the discretion of the council to approve or deny the license.
Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say that it's not just the four bar owners in East End that are, that are here talking about this matter and giving their input, there's also the other liquor stores in the city of Superior that are going to be affected by this. And as far as if we granted Super One a liquor license, I think that would open up the door to Walmart wanting to come in. Am I wrong on this, Mr. Prell?
I guess I can't suggest to you that I could anticipate one way or the other, how your decision tonight will drive another corporate entity's decision to pursue or not pursue a liquor license.
If the council denied a license to Super One, that would go along with the law that we already have and kind of set a precedent. So if somebody else comes along and goes through the same process by denying them a license today, or granting them a license today, would say that in the future, other companies could do it.
I hesitate to suggest that whatever action this council takes tonight locks them into an action by virtue of precedent, precedence setting, if and when another individual or corporate entity should apply for a liquor license. I truly believe that Chapter 125 liquor licenses is one of those remaining areas where local control remains undisturbed. As long as you folks, if, if the inclination is to, to deny the license, to not approve the license tonight, as long as you folks articulate the reasons for that, and you should, and we must, because if, if we do deny the license, the clerk's office is tasked by statute to provide in writing an explanation for the reasons that the council has denied the liquor license. Obviously, the players are here, and they're going to hear them anyway, but we still have that, that obligation to draft the letter. And I'm, I'm certain that your city clerk, and I, I know I would, want to hear those, those reasons. I, I think you articulated one just now, and I, I don't pretend to know which way you're leaning by, by way of a vote, counselor, but your concern for the impact that this license would have, not only on the nearby tavern owners, but other tavern owners in the community, is the start of, of, certainly is, is a reason that you can, that we can articulate if, if your decision is to deny the license. And I know I'm taking a long time to answer your question, but I really don't want to leave you with the idea tonight that your decision right now is going to set the tone or set the pace or set in stone some sort of obligation to act in one way or another next time you are fielding the, the consideration of the, of an application for a liquor license. You have to use your discretion, you have to use your judgment. And, and as others have indicated here already, that decision-making process can't be arbitrary and it can't be capricious. And I use a really sloppy analogy at the License and Fees Committee meeting when I said, an example that I can think of as, as a really sloppy decision, or reason, rather, that, that certainly would fall squarely, in my opinion, in arbitrary and capricious category, would be something like, I saw a miner's employee the other day wearing a Viking sweatshirt, and that really jams me up, and, and, yeah, I know. So, I mean, that, that makes me sound like I'm trying to be cute, and I'm not trying to be, but I would suggest to you that that's an arbitrary and, and, that's a decision that isn't grounded in reason or, or your sound judgment, and really has no relevance whatsoever to the, to the tavern community or any of those concerns that, that you find historically in some of the, some of this case law, where liquor licenses have been acted on, and then that decision has been challenged in court somehow. So I guess, I guess, please don't, please don't vote tonight worried about the next decision. The next decision's going to come with its own facts. The application is going to have his or her or the corporate entity's own personality, own design, own business plan, own physical plant, own impact or lack thereof on, on other, other operators. They're going to, they're going to bring their own different, unique game to the table in the context of impact on, on potential crime rates, traffic, whatever. So, so please, whatever you do tonight, and I don't pretend to have any influence in that, I don't, I don't pretend to have an opinion on it, actually, please do, do so by virtue of your own, your own judgment and your own discretion. And I think whatever, whatever you come up with, whatever you do will be justifiable and, and ultimately upheld, should it be challenged, if you take those steps and articulate the reasons, and if those reasons are better than something that's arbitrary or capricious. I'm sorry for the long winded, I know I blew the daylight, I know the three-minute rule, so I guess that...
Counselor Astrid Dahlbeck.
Well, I just have a question for you, Mr. Frog. All right, you say, if they vote because of this gentleman's agreement that supposedly they were told, isn't that kind of a facetious reason to not grant them the license? Or, or is that, doesn't fall in your category with the Viking sweatshirt?
Well, if, if by facetious, you mean arbitrary or capricious.
Capricious, yes.
I would, I would submit to you that you, the council could properly point to or state its concerns for promises or suggestions. I know there's a great deal of disagreement tonight over what was a promise, what was a solemn oath, what was a suggestion. So I don't pretend to have the final verdict on the strength of those words that were spoken, perhaps by someone who is no longer on earth to talk about it, to be perfectly honest with you. But if this council wants to, if, if certain of these, of our council members want to articulate as a frustration and as a reason for their vote to, to, to deny the license if they so choose, if they want to articulate that as a reason, I happen to believe that that is a valid one. The Village of, the Wisconsin Dells had entertained an application for a liquor license much more recently than 1943 and denied the, the liquor license based on a couple of factors, primarily impact to other license holders and such. And that unsuccessful applicant then went to the state legislature, must have had some clout and some resources, and, and convinced the legislature to, to allow applicants such as, as that one to, to apply for a license and take a license, even if that went above and beyond the local quota. That was another important fact. And we have quotas. So when, when that applicant came back to the Dells with that, that new, in essence, that new law in effect, the Dells, in addition to denying the license for the reasons that they had previously, said, oh, and by the way, we don't like it when you end-run us and take our, our no and go to the legislature and put into motion events that, that actually end up compromising our local control. And that was actually referenced in the decision as something that was a viable reason. Now, that won't be the cornerstone of my brief if I have to defend this council's action tonight, because that's an unpublished decision, and I won't bore you with the details as to what it means to be a published or an unpublished decision, but I do point that out because I think it gets close to and similar to the, the hypothetical you're talking about.
Any further discussion from the council? If not, I am going to take the liberty to make a few comments myself. First of all, I have high regard for the miners and their, with the, the Super Ones, it's a very fine organization, very good organization in the tri-state area and beyond. I was happy that they invested in our community more than once. But I'd be remiss if I didn't, and I'm going to say, defend myself. I've been involved in this project for a period of time, and I, I'm upset. I'm upset that intimations have been made that I'm a liar, that I'm not telling the truth, and that there wasn't a gentleman's agreement. And the most recent effort to display that, I have in my hand, and I'm going to start, I'm going to start a long time ago. There, there's phrases in here, a lot of loose allegations and rumors and most repeated allegation that a promise was made, and that the, that Super One representatives said that they would store or not sell liquor. Goes on to say that the allegation is untrue and that promise was never made. There was no handshake deal that Super One, da-da-da. And then it goes on to say that initially, it was not miners' intent to own... And then it goes on to say that initially, it was not miners' intent to own a liquor store at this location, and during the development stages of this project, we consistently said that we had no present intention of operating a liquor store, and those statements were true. That is true, that is true. They agreed to that particular matter. Along with, I asked for two considerations. One was, part of the considerations was my agreement, my willingness, my volunteering to negotiate on behalf of the miners with regard to securing properties that were perhaps not available because of people holding out. Two things. One was that that alley was going to be widened, with property from the Super One property widened so that parking could be made available behind the stores on East Fifth Street for there to be some parallel parking and so forth. And being that winter set in, and I never went out there for some long time, and I noticed that, holy cow, that didn't happen at all, and the answer I got was that the agreement that we had was lost in translation with the architects and engineers, and what was done was done. That clearly made me, and I think a lot of people in the East End Business District unhappy, and that, that was just not good. The other part of that agreement, and you've said it right here in your letter from your attorney, that there was no intention, and there was no intention. And so, this thing developed 180 degrees different, and I've had conversations, and you folks can disagree with this, but we've had conversations, and the most recent one in my office several months ago, and I said, "I can't go with this." And, well, things have changed. Well, I was told things have changed. And prior to that meeting, I took it upon myself, I happened to be on vacation in Florida, and I took it upon myself to call Mr. Miner, and he said to me, "Things have changed. I know what changed. The ownership changed." And that is not a good reason for the agreement that we had to change. I want to say, I want to stop and say one other thing. I have very high respect for these councillors. These 10 councillors have the toughest, and I will say, the toughest jobs in the city of Superior, and I have high respect for the councillors, no matter which way they vote. I also have high respect for this administration, and I also have been told and heard and complained to that I'm anti-business. That equally hurts. There's more construction and more business growth in this community today than there has been for the last 10 years. And it isn't by magic. I don't, please don't, please do not do that. I want to say one other thing, and I don't want to be melodramatic, but I'm a man of my word, I always have been. I think most people that know me know that also. I'm going to take you back to when I decided to run for mayor. I went to my father in September of 1974. He said, his exact words were, "Why are you, you have a good job. Why are you doing this?" He said, "Let the bastards fight among themselves." Those are his exact words, and you know my, you know my father. I said, "But I need to do this." And he said to me, he says, "If you do this, Bruce, you do it with your head high. You have a mother in heaven, you have eight siblings that need to walk down the street with their heads up, and be a, be a man with integrity." And I'm telling you here today that I am a man of integrity. I keep my word, I'm a man of my word, and I did not lie to anybody, and I did not make these things up. As the council votes, I will respect that. But I want to make it crystal clear that over these past three and a half years, I've done everything I can with the support of these great people, and the support of this community, to be first honest, truthful, and try to make some things happen in stone. I am not anti-business, I think you have a great, great, great operation in the store, and you've made great investments in this community, but I don't feel very good about some of the things that are being passed around, about allegations and loose promises and so forth. That is not true. I'll call the question.
I'm assuming you'd like a roll call vote?
I would just urge you, if you're, for those of you who are inclined to vote no, please just state your reasons. Those will be, if the no vote carries the day, that will be the, all those reasons will be folded into the letter to the applicant, and we are required to provide that. Obviously, if the yes votes carry the day, such a letter and such an explanation is absolutely not required.
Councillor. I don't have any problem with that myself, Frog, but is that something we should have council leadership present?
Well, I mean, I don't, it doesn't matter who presents it, and council leadership, I'm presuming you are referencing your president and vice president, they might both be voting yes for the license.
No, no, I guess what I'm saying is, for the people that vote no, put down on a piece of paper at a later time the reasons for no, and then let them, let the council leadership put those thoughts together in a presentation to whoever it needs to go to.
No, I guess I don't see the value to that process. With all due respect, Councillor Olson, I think now is the time to be forthright with an explanation for a no vote. An explanation for a yes vote can certainly, can certainly be shared with us tonight, but an explanation for a no vote is expected because we are obligated by statute, I think appropriately so, to provide reasons for denial of the liquor license in writing, if that ends up being, being the case. And I think, I think the best way, or the best mechanism for that to be expressed is simply by stating it. We all know how to debate, we all know how to articulate our thoughts. We've certainly hammered these issues in front of a full galley now for two council meetings and at least one committee meeting, so I really, I appreciate the idea, and it's probably something we could, we could develop in the future, but I guess my preference is to have just a simple statement as to the reasons for those, by those of you who would be inclined to vote no.
Okay, I just want to state that I disagree with that, not your, not your theory. What I disagree with is if it gets to a point where there's any intimidation, or if somebody has the lack of words on why they are, why are they opposing this or voting no to this, if the ability to, on the spot right now, not be able to express themselves, I don't think it's fair to explain why I vote no, but not to explain why I vote yes. I understand that we're either approving or denying it. That's just my thought. I know how I'm voting, and I'm very comfortable with the decision I'm going to make, but I just, I don't, there should be some privacy to how the council is reacting to this. But, it don't matter.
And I just have to respectfully disagree with Councillor Olson. I think that we've all had plenty of time to listen to our constituents, listen to the audience, think about this, it went to license and fees. I think we should all be prepared, like any decision that we make, to state why, and I think we just, the public deserves to know why we're voting yes or no. And I have no problem in detailing either a yes vote or a no vote, in whichever way we go. So I think this council needs to be transparent, and allow people to understand fully why we're making the decision we are.
With all due respect to Mr. Fensley and the Licenses and Fees Committee, there were three members on that committee or whatever, and they brought forward a suggestion. Now, we, as the rest of the council, ordinarily, we'd have 10 other people, or seven other people voting tonight, we only have, well, we're two are excused. Eight. But as far as explaining, if I had to explain yes, or, no, I'm sorry, if I had to explain no, then why doesn't somebody have to explain yes?
Well, this is, this is unique, folks, that the statutes require, and Ms. Kalan might...
It's clearly defined in 125.12 parent 3M that I must notify the applicant in writing the reason for the denial, and set, well, and set forth the reasons for denial. We need to hear your reasons for denial, so we can put that in writing. I don't think Frog and I are going to sit down and put word for word, there's going to be a summary of what the discussion and what you're, what you qualify as your no vote.
Let me put it a different way, and this is, this is as transparent and open as I know how to be. If the no votes carry the night, and the liquor license application is denied, the letter going from the city clerk's office to the unsuccessful applicant, which houses and states the reasons that the council expressed as its basis for the denial, will likely be, will almost certainly be Exhibit 1 and only if and when that decision is challenged, and that would be what, what your city attorney would have to defend. So I know that it's a little bit awkward, or maybe even counterintuitive. We don't ask you to articulate reasons typically for a vote one way or the other, but as Ms. Kalan read straight from the statutes themselves, we have to, and I think it's appropriate, I think it's reasonable to expect an applicant who's, an unsuccessful applicant for a liquor license, to be acquainted with the reasons for the denial, just in the spirit of good form, without a statutory obligation. So I don't take issue with that, it wouldn't matter if I did, but we're obligated to that statutory construct. I didn't write the statute, Ms. Kalan certainly didn't write the statute, we simply have to provide the reasons. If you, if you cite a host of reasons, some of them might ultimately be considered by the, a court, a higher reviewing authority, as not appropriate, but the balance might be. So think of it as a sifting or winnowing process. And some of your reasons from voter to voter might not exactly mirror the others. I'm just asking you to state them, because we have to state them in the letter. And if that's awkward, I apologize, it's not rules that I, that I make up, it's simply something that we are trying to acquaint you with as we go into the vote, rather than after, to avoid any awkwardisms that way, and to acquaint you with what the legal landscape requires of us as a municipality.
One last question. If that's in the statute, that's fine, but can we take the complete vote first, and if the noes lose, then we don't have to say anything? Or do we have to say it when we say no?
Wow. I mean, I guess my preference is, if you're going to vote no, I think it's fair and transparent and honest and expected to hear why. If I'm, if I'm hearing from you that you're intimidated by some reaction that others might have, after hearing your reasons, I hope you're wrong about that. I'm about to turn 13 years at this job, and I've never heard of a councillor being threatened or, or being made to feel somehow unsafe because of a decision that they, they had made, and I really trust and hope that we're dealing with honorable people here from top on down, and I just have to believe that we can speak our minds and state our reasons, and have that carry the day, and not, and not be punished for that, or somehow pay for that at a level that's inappropriate. And I'm seeing some eye-rolling out there, and I wish things were different. I wish Chapter 125 didn't necessarily read the way it did in the provision that Ms. Kalan shared with you just now, but I'm just asking you, if you have a no vote, to articulate the reasons, to see how it goes, and then to go back and try to firm up a record after the vote has been cast, if it's necessary, I think presents a layer of disingenuousness that we ought not to engage in. And frankly, if we're inclined to vote no on this, I think these folks have, have the right to hear those reasons for that. And I guess I don't deem it overly courageous as, so much as a part of the process and something to expect. And Councillor Missolia, again, I don't pretend to know which way your vote's going to go, but you made a comment, oh, 15 or so minutes ago, something along the lines of, "It's my sense that not only will four or so of these local, the neighbor, the tavern operators that are neighbors to this business will be impacted," but it's my impression and my feeling that that impact will be felt by others, more citywide, and that's, I'm not pretending to use the same exact words that you used, but I thought I heard you suggest that. That, to me, is starting to, is the expression of a reason that's not arbitrary or capricious, and would be a reason for your vote to, of no to the license application. So it's just that sort of thing. If the notion of the, of the suggestions or the promises made to the administration in the years or months leading up to this development are something that's bothering you, I urge you to use that, or to express that, if that's something that's bothering you. But I can't coach you on that, it has to be genuine, it has to be your judgment. So, again, I'm having some long answers, I'm beating the heck out of the three-minute rule, that doesn't apply to me, of course, but, but I feel, I feel strongly about these things, and I can tell you're nervous about it, and obviously, there's been a lot of pressure. You've been fielding phone calls for a long time, I have too, to a certain degree, and certainly, that's been the opportunity to field all those calls and have all that pressure has been helped along by the fact that we took a pass on this in July, and then we had another run at it at a committee level just a week or so ago. So I feel your misery, and I'm sorry for that, but I think your city clerk would expect to hear the reasons, and in a spontaneous and genuine fashion, not after the fact, for, for the no votes to the license. And if I'm misstating your position, please help me out.
Not, please call the roll.
Please use your microphone when you're voting. Councillor Missolia.
My vote is no on the liquor license application. As I stated, and Frog stated, that personally, I think the city of Superior has enough liquor stores. Granting another liquor store license is going to impact the ones that we already have. Competition is fine, but oversaturation is not necessary either. I know Superior had numerous bars in years past, the number has gone down, and I think that's a good thing. Besides that, I'm not 100% convinced that miners was honest in their dealings with the East End merchants. I could probably give you more, but that's enough for now. No.
Councillor Fensley.
Yes, in order to protect the validity of our current ordinance, I think that we should uphold a liquor license to a business that's willing to oblige us and operate a tavern in conjunction with the liquor store.
Councillor Herrick is abstaining. Councillor Dennis Dobek.
I vote yes. Very simple, right, equal protection of the law.
Councillor Esther Dobek.
I vote yes, because I can see no valid reason to deny at this time. Thank you.
Councillor Olson.
No, and I've had this decision made for quite a while, but some of the people in the audience kind of helped me solidify that tonight, one by Attorney Markovich. kind of helped me solidify that tonight, one by Attorney Markovich, by bringing up the comment about the golden rule. And with the mayor's comments about being a man of his word. I'm a man of my word. I take pride in that with everything that I do. And for somebody to have made an agreement, whether it's a handshake, whether it's in general conversation, I believe you better be man enough to own up to that decision. I don't believe that Super One did a very good job of defending themselves tonight. There were accusations that were kind of flung around to you guys and you never came up and said anything different, that there wasn't a gentleman's agreement. You didn't argue that point. So that's lack of being prepared, in my opinion. The other thing that I brought up with Mr. Hagen was the deal with the alley that the mayor brought up as well. One of the reasons I brought that question up is that the alley was to be widened. And when I spoke to a retired worker from Miners that lives in Brooklyn Center, Brooklyn Park, whatever, I can't remember his name, we got into the discussion about widening the alley and the agreement that was made with Miners and the people in the neighborhood. Come to find out at a later date, when things change, there is an aquifer, which is drainage system underneath that part of the alley that was to be widened, and there was a berm built on top of that aquifer to avoid people from driving on it, crushing the drainage system. I also looked at original plans because of what I do for a living. I'm with the laborers union and I had some liberties. And I looked at some plans. And in my opinion, as a person in the construction industry of 39 years, I don't believe that Miners Corporation acted in good faith in conveying all the information that they seem to want to convey now. So my answer is a definite no.
Counselor Fensley.
My vote is yes, as I do not see any valid reason to deny this. And I just want to comment that I think we need to encourage businesses to be able to change their business development plan. I know that there's several current businesses out there that are doing off-sale liquor that started out as a, strictly a tavern, changed their business plan somewhere along the way and ventured out. And in order to stay as a good business, you have to continually hone your business plan and change for the changing market. So I just, I vote yes for this. I support it based on a number of things that we've heard tonight.
Counselor Bender.
No, because of the promise that was made.
Counselor Sweeney.
I vote yes for the reasons stated, but basically I just don't think it's a city council's responsibility to control who and who does not go into business. Thank you.
And Counselor McDonald is abstaining. That vote is five to three and the motion to approve fails.
I left about a minute and a half. And I'd just like to say something that kind of is postscript. Bruce, I heard your talk and I guess I feel I ought to say something about it. I don't think there's anybody in this room that knows the Hagan family better than me. I was your dad's city attorney way back when he was mayor. I watched you grow up. You're my next door neighbor. We've been friends for all these years. I didn't author that letter. However, I don't think it was anybody's intent to impugn your honesty. I just, probably there was a poor choice of words, but I know what the Miners and Super One people think occurred, and I don't think anybody believed that you were not totally and completely honest. I just want you to know that.
Thank you. Thank you, Toby.
Item 7.1, City Attorney Pearl and Planning Director Circa requesting council permission to sell single-family dwelling at 725 Pluff Avenue to Ligman Properties for $24,000 without seeking bids or proposals and without publishing intent to sell.
Heard a motion, second to approve. Discussion. Hearing seen none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion carried.
Planning Director Circa submitting a request from Senior Connections to place signs in the right-of-way for the annual walk to end Alzheimer's disease for Douglas County, September 18th. The signs would be placed along the route for four hours, about four hours.
Heard the motion, second to approve. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion is carried.
7.3, Planner Anderson is requesting to put up for bid property formerly known as 1927 Ohio Avenue for a minimum bid of $23,400.
Heard a motion, second to approve. Counselor Herrick.
Just a question on this. Jason, are they going to build on this property?
When we, when we put the publication in the paper, we will have development plans a must accompanying the bid. So yes, it will not be sold as a vacant lot.
All right. Thank you.
Jason, I got another question for you real quick. Was that, the house was ripped down, was razed, it was fairly dour house. Was that a meth house?
Yes.
Has all the proper cleaning up been done?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion is carried.
Item 7.4, Assistant Public Works Director Janico submitting a bid, recommending a bid award for the North 28th Street and Woodlawn Avenue project, Monarch Paving, for $204,849.70.
Heard a motion, second. Discussion. All, Counselor Olson.
Todd, we didn't get the separate cover. Was there more than one bid or?
No. You got it.
I don't have it.
Where, when did we bid?
It was emailed out to all of you and those that hadn't picked up your packet was included in there too, wasn't it?
Yeah. Well, it doesn't show it here anywhere, but anyway.
I can fill you in. It was, there was one bid from Monarch Paving, $204,849.70. It was mostly a paving job, a section of 28th, and then the repairs on Woodlawn. I did a rough estimate on it and my rough estimate was some unique quantities and some small.